Good evening, everyone. We're gonna get started. Evelyn, roll call, please.
Kristi McAvoy.
Present.
Kristy Wells.
Here.
Kristy Lawson.
Here.
Vice President Marquez.
Here.
President Diaz-Locum.
Present. Welcome, everyone, this evening to our board meeting. You'd like to speak to the board. If you're here in person, please complete a card and pass it over to Evelyn. If you're at home, please fill out the Google Docs. Si necesitas traducción, tenemos traducción en español. Puedes llamar al nueve siete ocho nueve nueve cero cinco uno tres siete y presiona ocho tres siete siete cero cuatro uno y la tecla de número para la contraseña. John, you wanted to change something?
Yes, please. Good evening, everyone. I know we have members in the audience that are here for the oath of office. So what I was thinking, the agenda says that we go next and do the oath of office, which is fine, but then run into a reception. So I think it's best we do the oath of office. And then we do the recognition of Maria Diaz-Locum and then come back for the board rotation. How do you feel about that? Okay, perfect.
Are there any other changes to that agenda then? Hearing none. We'll move right along then to the oath of office. Dr. Baker.
So this evening, we have two members of our community that are going to take the oath of office tonight. Cecilia Marquez, who is our trustee, who is returning for a new term. Fantastic. So let's start with you. And I know you have some family members that are going to do this for you this evening.
Yes, so I have my children here.
Perfect. So would you like to come to the podium up front? With your family? Right, so who is gonna start? Just as long as we can, everybody can hear.
I state your name, so solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
I, Cecilia Marquez, so solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear the true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will bear the true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And that I will well faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Good. Congratulations. And this is from the county office. This here is from the county office of San Mateo. The county of San Mateo. It's a certification of election to Cecilia Marquez was appointed to the office. Member, governing board, Redwood City School District trustee area five. Congratulations.
Cecilia, Cecilia, have a picture taken with your family. They're all here. Yes.
Come on up and take a picture with.
And maybe you could introduce them as well. I know some of them.
So this right here is my immediate family, my husband and my three children. My mother, my sister, my brother-in-law, and my two nephews. And they were all, he is an eighth grader at Kennedy, they were all Redwood City Elementary students.
All right, so if you can all come up here, maybe I can get you.
Thank you.
One up. And kind of put you, what do you want to have Cecilia? Yeah, you can do it. So picture she's. Right, you got it. Dennis, Dennis is there. On two hundred and six. Big smile. You can see it through the mask. This is your mom's phone. That's mom and then that's. One, two, three. One more, one, two, and three. Yeah, well, only one more. One, two, three, and one more. One, two, and three. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now our next trustee is Mr. David Weekly. And I believe his children are going to follow me here in the.
We'll see how this goes.
I have a lot of fake.
David Weekly, so solemnly swear.
I, David Weekly, so solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear the true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Yay!
That's a great job!
Election of elections, David Weekly was appointed to the office of the member, governing board, Redwood City School District, trustee area two. Congratulations. And now we'll come down to the recognition, to your recognition. Okay. So we're going to recognize someone that is leaving us this evening, not leaving us for good. You know, once you're in Redwood City, you always get to come back, right, Liz? And anyone else who's in the office that has left us for some, for retirement or whatever, and comes back. So tonight, Maria, we have a little tribute for you, and I think I will get to start off before I turn it over to some of our board members. And I know Alisa will also be participating with us. But we do have several little things for you, but let me do my little spiel. Okay? So Maria, you will deeply be missed by all of us in the Redwood City School District, those of us that are employees, teachers, administrators, staff, community members. We definitely are going to miss you. I know I will. I've known you for twenty-plus years now, and it's been an honor. For the past two decades, you've been kind, thoughtful, and calm, who always kept a steady course towards doing what is best for all students in the Redwood City School District. Not just those students that are in your area, when we went through trustee areas, but you made it clear, along with other board members, that you were here to serve the whole community of Redwood City, not just the areas that you represent. You have always reflected on what you've learned and on what you've heard and on what you've researched before making a decision, which is a quality that I admire, even knowing that the superintendent, along with his cabinet, does the research and does some of the legwork for board members. You go out and do your own on top of that and compare, contrast, and then come up with statements, thoughtfulness, to determine what decision we will make. I've always admired how you listen to all voices before making that final decision. You listen to the littlest guys, to the biggest ones in the middle school. You listen to all parents, you listen to community members in English and in Spanish. Perhaps more importantly, you've made many of us aware of the needs of children's, the needs of children and families on the Bayside. You've been that pillar who has, along with Cecilia, when she joined, but you were the first one on the Bayside to work at the Fair Oaks Library. Definitely let all of us who were administrators and teachers know what was taking place along with your colleagues on the board. You provided a voice to those that needed to have a voice. And we can go back many years and discuss when that voice was not heard, but now it's becoming quite prominent in this community, which is due to all your efforts. Thank you. I remember several years ago when you worked with San Mateo County Board of Supervisors to create a summer school program at the Fair Oaks Library. I was just starting out in the district office in HR and then starting to work with the educational services people. We didn't have enough capacity to really meet the needs of all our kids in the district. Maria took it upon herself to go before the Board of Supervisors, so we got that program. And you were teaching. You were teaching every day, plus doing lunch duty, handing out lunches. I'd come to meet with you in the library, and you were in the back getting lunches ready and then coming back out to work with the kids. To this day, parents continue to seek you out at the library to talk with you about challenges their children are having. That was really something that was brought forth during the time of the pandemic, during the time of the recession prior to, especially during that time in that recession. While I was in HR as the assistant soup, as you recall correctly, there were two years in a row we let fifty teachers go. It was not an easy task, but we did have to do it. And I know you supported what needed to be done, even though it was hard work, and gave that information to the Hispanic Latino community to understand why we were doing this. To this day, parents continue to seek you out. And I'm sure they will continue even after you leave, so feel free to pick up the phone, call me. You're very good at technology, at texting and, and, you know, emailing me and so forth. And let me know what you're hearing. While you've always been a strong advocate for the Bayside, all of us also admire your, your stand on representing, as I said previously, all students in the district. This was evident in 2017, as I said previously, when our district moved to an election system by trustee areas. Maria, along with all the other board members that were on the board at that time, really came to consensus, consensus to really generate a manner in which, no matter what trustee area they were serving, you made it, along with your colleagues, the very adamant choice that they would serve all students, not just the area in which you lived in. We thank you for your service and for the two decades that you dedicated to the children of our community. Believe me, you will certainly be missed. And this is a gift from CAP. It says, awarded to Maria Diaz-Locum for your local dedication and unwavering commitment. Thank you for your outstanding contribution, contribution, I'm sorry, toward our goals and for making our organization stand above the rest. Redwood City School District, 2022. And there's another Well, yes, this came from Mr. Mullins. It was sent to me. It's from the legislature. It's a relation from Kevin Mullins' office.
Great. I'll have to send Kevin a note.
Yes, please do.
I got them ribbons and everything.
Do you want to take a picture of this? Be great. And then we'll get on with all the board members, including our new trustee in a second. So. And now, I believe our trustees would like to say something. So who would like to start?
So I think as most everyone here knows, Maria has been a dedicated member of the Redwood City School Board for over two decades, and her service to the community has truly been exceptional. Maria has been a tireless advocate for our students and has always been especially in tune with the needs of our Spanish-speaking community. She's been a strong voice for equity and inclusion and has worked tirelessly to ensure that every student has the support they need to succeed. In addition to her work on behalf of our students, Maria has been an invaluable member of our budget committee, which I super appreciate because that's not my forte. She has been instrumental in helping us navigate the challenges of tight budgets and difficult financial decisions and has always put the needs of our students and staff in our district first. Maria's impact goes beyond policy and numbers, though. She's been a mentor and a role model to countless students, teachers, and parents, inspiring all of us with her passion, dedication, and hard work, not just in the district, but in the library as well. So thank you, Maria, for your many years of service and dedication. You've been an invaluable member of our board, and I'm grateful for all that you've done for our students and our community. We will miss your presence here on the board, but we know that you're going to continue to be a champion for education in all that you do. So thank you.
Ever since my family moved here fifteen years ago, you've been on the school board. I mean, even prior to that. Since my kids started in kindergarten, my first one is now a senior at Woodside High School, and my second one is now a ninth grader at Sequoia. You've been here. It's remarkable, the amount of context and compassion and, you know, passion for education, for Redwood City, for the community and the students. It's just remarkable. And I selfishly, as Janet mentioned, you've been a mentor to so many people. I'm lucky that I was able to get these two years with you to learn from all of your history and experience, but also that first year where I got to do my one-on-one-on-one with Dr. Baker and you really helped me understand so much that was going on, and I'll be forever grateful, not just for the twenty-plus year, the multiple decades of service that you provided for all of the students, but selfishly what you've given me directly. So thank you very much.
Shall I go next?
Okay.
Oh, no, go ahead, David. You can go.
No, it was.
No, it's Cecilia.
Oh, yeah, maybe Cecilia can go last, because I know she's got something special, unless Cecilia you want to go, and then you can do the special. It's up to you.
Okay, sure. I will go ahead. I'm actually gonna read actually what I wrote on the kudo board for Maria. And this is what I said. As Dr. Sue said, since, as we know, she is a librarian and has read many, many books, and I'm sure that was one of her favorite ones that now she can get to read to her grandson. All the places you will go. You will now have plenty of time to spend with your loved ones without worrying about committee meetings, reading the agenda. By the way, when there are long ones, I split mine in three days. And/or board meetings. It's been a pleasure to work side of you for the past four years. The world may never know all the headaches, sleepless nights, and anxiety felt during and after making a decision. I appreciate your calm demeanor during some of the most tense meetings, which at the end always benefited the students.
Yes, I will. Thank you, Cecilia.
And then this is a gift from us board members for you to think of us every time. Of course, you know, we know that you like to plant, and so this little native tree, you can take care of it, and every time it blooms, you can think of the board members and cabinet that helped you throughout the years as a board trustee. So thank you very much.
Oh, boy, now you've really put me on the spot.
So Maria, may I say something before you?
Absolutely.
So I'm so sorry I can't be there in person. I don't have COVID yet, but it's running through my family, and I do have a little something going on, so I wanted to keep everybody safe just in case. So I'm really sorry I can't be there. I was so looking forward to tonight, both to welcome David, but to also thank you, Maria. So let me just say, you know, similar to Mike, I was thinking the same thing. You were a board member when my oldest daughter, Marissa, started at Clifford as a kindergartner. So I've always known you as a school board trustee. And then I joined fifteen years ago, so we've had the pleasure of working together the last fifteen years. And I agree, you're such a role model and such a mentor for so many of us over the years. And then I feel like, you know, the last many, we've been good colleagues working together, tackled so many big issues. And, you know, some of the things I think, when I think about you, you always keep the focus on the students, always on the students, and particularly those students that need a little more. And you've always, you know, when we're looking at data or talking about kids and budgets and what they need, you're always mentioning our special ed students, our newcomers, our English learners, but really all students, and you want all students to succeed. And that's something that I really appreciate. No matter what the tough decision was, it comes back to students. So, so thank you for that focus. I really appreciated working with you on a number of the committees that we got to work on together, Redwood City together, the government relations, the two-by-two-by-two, the charter school review way back when. And I also just wanted to say that, you know, thank you for all your work with the California School Boards Association. I really appreciate that, and that sort of led the way for me thinking about serving with the California School Boards Association, which I've done. So again, thank you for your, you know, your collegial nature on the board. You've always, as Cecilia said, had a calm presence and really helped us through some very difficult decisions and some, you know, really wonderful times as well. So thank you so much. I know you will continue to serve in so many ways, and I'm sure we'll continue to call on you when needed. So thanks so much, Maria.
Ah, thank you, guys.
And before you want to say, I also forgot that the Office of Anna Eschew sent you a certificate of special congressional recognition with a nice letter. So you should take that. And of course, you couldn't leave without Redwood City recognition. We do have, we have a hand up, so why don't we? I think it was to sell. Oh, start with Dennis, yeah. Mr. McBride.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay, great. So I've been busy scribbling and trying to reduce what I wrote because it's kind of repetitive, but so while Maria, twenty-one years, what a journey. There has been some really good times and some not-so-good times. And unlike Dr. Baker, I'm not going to talk about the bad times.
Thank you, Dennis.
It was all a struggle to find money for what you knew we needed to do. I think the best times for you were visiting the schools to interact with students, teachers, staff, administrators. For many years, you were a delegate to the California School Board Association. And what that meant is you had to leave your house and go to San Diego. You had to go to Sacramento, and you had a lot of time away from your family to do that. What I think you will be known for is a really caring person that always put children first, very common theme. It was easy to predict where you were on an issue. You just had to ask yourself, what is best for children? And Maria would always be there. A board member that had the ability to be externally very calm while parents and people were yelling at you and saying bad things, but inside you were churning. My personal fondest memories were visiting schools or evening programs with you. All the students on the B-side, we ran up to you, so excited to see you. You were like the main attraction. You knew every student's name, and you knew every parent's name. You were the face of the school board on the B-side. You were a great committee member to be with on the committee and the budget committee. I look forward to be invited to your summer school program at the library because you had all our students there, and they were so energetic and so excited to be doing the program. And you you acted like just like a second mother to them. You were just fantastic. You're always a fantastic colleague. You were kind, smart, not afraid to take a risk, and you could always be trusted with confidential information, and you always kept your word. Personally, you and I had many meaningful conversations about how to make the schools better for the students. There were times that after a very tough board meeting, I would call you, and you would call me down, and I really appreciated that. You would always be, it'll be okay, Dennis, we'll get through it. And but in some ways, I guess that was one of your children. You know, I think what your legacy, very few people start out knowing what they want their legacy to be, and some never have a legacy. And I think you have four. First, you're a mom, very important to you. Second, you're a wife. Third, a caring school board member, and fourth, a caring public librarian for children and students. And it was always fun working with you. Thank you for twenty-one years of making a difference in the lives of students, the community, teachers, staff, administrators, and board members. Thank you. So.
Ninfa en secundino?
Sí, nos escucha?
Sí. Okay, bien, gracias.
Pues nosotros queremos felicitar mucho a María por su jubilación en nombre de todos los padres y estudiantes de la comunidad de Familias Unidas. Queremos agradecerles personalmente el increíble apoyo que nos ha dado a largo de los años. Sus contribuciones han ayudado a cientos de familias en nuestra comunidad a lograr el éxito a través del amor por la alfabetización y el aprendizaje. María deberías de sentirte increíblemente orgullosa de haber jugado papel importante en el fortalecimiento de la comunidad que te rodea. Muchas gracias y lo mejor en tu retiro. Congratulations on your retirement, Maria. On behalf of the parents and students of the Familias Unidas community, we want to thank you for your incredible support over the years. Your contributions have helped hundreds of families in our community achieve success through the love of literacy and learning. You should feel incredibly proud as you play a big part in the strange, unique community around you. Thank you very much and congratulations on your retirement.
Muchas muchas gracias por todo lo que ha ayudado que ha dado nuestras familias. Y recuerde que nosotros siempre vamos a estar para apoyarla así como usted siempre está para apoyar a nuestra comunidad. Muchísimas gracias.
Ah, gracias a los dos.
Bien.
Just so help.
Well, good evening. I am freshly retired, so I'm here on behalf of of myself and of the city, but I do know that many of my former colleagues also will share my sentiments. I'll start by saying I so admire and appreciate all of you from the staff to the trustees that are in this room tonight. I think there's a special place in heaven, if you believe in heaven, for school board members. I think it's definitely the toughest job in in government, and I would take being mayor any day over that. It's probably much easier. Maria, you know, you are a giant in Redwood City. Your work on equity started long before the idea of equity was even being broadly discussed. You've provided calm leadership in tumultuous times. I witnessed it personally during the school consolidation process and then the pandemic. And I've really enjoyed collaborating with you on our two-by-two-by-two, and I wish you all the best for your retirement. Cecilia, I'm really appreciative, appreciative that you've continued to serve. I've enjoyed getting to know you, and I've found you to be a capable, vulnerable, and genuine leader. And I'm really delighted that you'll be continuing to work with our students. And finally, David, on behalf of the Whale Pod, we're also very proud of you and excited for what you're going to bring to this role. You're naturally curious, you're empathetic, and you're data-driven, and these are all qualities that will make you a great colleague and trustee. So thank you for stepping up to serve. And Maxwell, great job delivering your dad's swearing-in.
Max, I really liked it. It was hilarious.
And congratulations from the girls.
We'll have some more.
Media and Michelle Torres?
Buenas noches. Buenas noches, estimada audiencia. Mi nombre es Michelle Torres. Antes que todo, quiero agradecer a la señora María y a todos allí presentes por el apoyo incondicional a la familia unida. Que gracias a las familias unidas. Discúlpeme. Familias Unidas, cuando empecé a tomar los cursos en Familias Unidas en Familias Unidas en el 2019, no conocía a nadie. Recién estaba llegada en este país. Me sentí sola, pero con la comunidad de Familias Unidas me sentí como en familia. Y con este programa yo aprendí sobre la importancia de la unión familiar, cómo ser una líder activa en la escuela de mis hijos y cómo apoyar a mi familia en sus metas educativas y hábitos saludables. Por ejemplo, cuando implementamos la estrategia de lecturas, matemáticas, y buenos hábitos de estudio, mi hijo mayor mostró mucho avance en su en su estudio. La calificación de F y C, ahora mi hijo tiene un excelente grado. Y también se ha recordado. Torres, discúlpeme que estoy muy nerviosa. Sorry, por el apoyo que le están dando a mi hijo. Gracias a María por siempre apoyar a Familias Unidas, a este programa tan maravilloso que no ayuda a educar a nuestros hijos y sacarlos adelante. Muchas gracias.
Okay, you guys hear me?
Yes, it's else here.
Okay, perfect. Then I will interpret the comment. Well, good evening. My name is Michelle Torres, and before anything, I want to say thank you to María and to everybody there present for all of the unconditional support for Familias Unidas. Thank you to Familias Unidas. Thank you to Familias Unidas. When I barely got here, then I felt very alone, and I didn't know anybody. And then once I started knowing Familias Unidas, I felt like in a family. And with this program, I learned about the importance of the family union and how to be an active leader in my children's schools and how to support my family in their educational goals and healthy habits. For example, when we implemented the strategy with reading and good habits, good study habits, my older son showed a lot of improvement on his schooling. And right now he has excellent grades, excellent grades. And and I'm sorry, I am very nervous, and thank you for all of the support that you guys are giving my son. Thank you, Maria, for always supporting Familias Unidas and for all of this marvelous program that has been helping us to educate our children and to make them move forward. Thank you very much.
Beatriz Fernanda Zenda?
Me oye?
Sí, señora.
Okay. Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Beatriz Fernanda Zenda. Yo tengo once años y he estado en el programa de Familias Unidas desde preescolar. Nuevamente estoy tomando clases con mi hermanito Juan Carlos, que está en primer grado. Yo quiero que viva la misma experiencia que yo tuve, que yo tuve en Familias Unidas. Mi experiencia en este programa ha sido asombrosa porque aprendí sobre la importancia de la lectura, matemáticas, tecnología, en salud, del plato nutritivo, y el apoyo de los padres. Desde chiquita me han fascinado los libros y todavía me fascinan. Las Familias Unidas me han enseñado mucho y todavía me lo dicen. Antes de que leas un libro, mira los dibujos y haz una predicción de lo que piensas que va a pasar. Y ahora también hacemos experimentos en familia con los kits de ciencia que nos dan. Me ha encantado Familias Unidas. Gracias por el apoyo que han dado Familias Unidas, y espero que este programa siga así. Gracias.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Beatriz Fernanda Zenda. I am eleven years old. I have been in Familias Unidas since preschool. Newly, I have been taking classes with my brother Juan Carlos that is in first grade. I want him to have the same experience I had in Familias Unidas. My experience in this program has been awesome because I learned about the importance of reading, math, technology, health, and nutrition dish, and the support of parents. Since I was little, I was fascinated by books, and I still am fascinated. Las Familias Unidas has taught me and still tells me, before you read a book, look at the pictures and make a prediction of what you think is going to happen. Now we are doing experience in experience in families using science kits that they have given to us. I love Familias Unidas. Thank you for the support that you have given to Familias Unidas, and I hope this program keeps going like this. Thank you.
Laura Ramírez, su comentario esto para María también?
Sí. Gracias.
Puedes empezar, señora. Señora, puedes empezar.
Okay, gracias. Hola, unas tardes. Mi nombre es Laura. Muchísimas gracias, señora María, por por apoyar el programa de Familias Unidas. Yo, como muchos también, tengo poquito aquí, desconocía el sistema educativo de este país. Y gracias a este programa me ayudaron mucho. Hay muchas cosas que desconocía. Aquí las aprendí. Y gracias a eso he empezado con el pie derecho en la escuela con mi hijito que va empezando. Empezamos muy bien. Gracias a los hábitos de lectura que implementé en mi hogar, así como rutinas diarias saludables. Y me encantaría que más familias sigan beneficiándose de este grandioso programa. Muchísimas gracias, señora María.
Tell, do you want to translate?
Yes, I didn't know if she was gonna also do it in English. Okay, so good evening, everybody. My name, and thank you, and thank you, Maria, for supporting Familias Unidas. And, you know, me as many people, then I had little time here, and I didn't know the educational system in the country. And thank you to this program. They helped me a lot in many things that I didn't know, and I learned them here. And thanks to that, I started with the right food and the school with my son. And even though we are barely starting, we started really well. And thank you to the reading habits that I implemented in my house, as well as good habits, as good, healthy habits. They, every day, I would love for more families to get benefits from this program. So thank you very much, Maria.
Wow. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. I first started, well, I've always believed in education, but my son John is in the back room with his partner Liz. And that big guy used to be a little guy one time. And I went to Hoover School and graduated from there, and he happened to go to summer school at Hoover School, and we were walking together, and I was so excited, you know, this is where I, my class was and that, and he stopped at the end, and he asked me, Mom, why are these children not important? And I was like, what are you talking about? So I asked him, what do you mean, hon? And he started to tell me about the difference between his school and Hoover. He talked about the trash in the hallways. He talked about the dirty carpet, the students who didn't speak English and didn't have a teacher who understood them. And he just kept on going, and he said he wanted to do something to change that. So we went and talked to the politicians, Ruben Baralas and others, and talked to board members here. And eventually I got on the site council and then went for the board, and it's because of his comment, why are these children not important? So I'm glad he's here this evening with me. So I don't have a speech written. I'm for those of you that don't know me, I'm a very shy person. I'm private. I don't like attention. Hard to believe for someone that's a librarian, huh? Originally, I was an adult services librarian, but like everything else, you have to do everything. So I started to do storytimes and do the voices that I only did for my children when I would read to them. And luckily, the rest of the kids loved them. So this evening, first of all, I like to thank my family because, as you all know, right, Dennis? They give up a lot so that you can be here, and mine had certainly have. After a while, they didn't even, my sons didn't even want to go to the store with me because I would get stuck. After a while, they didn't even, my sons didn't even want to go to the store with me because I would get stuck. So and they were my advisors. The sounding board, I would ask, you know, we have this issue, what do you think? And they would tell me. They were my unpaid interns. They would do work. Doing precinct walking was not their favorite thing, especially for John. He didn't like being told, "No, go away." But they did it. I also want to thank the students because they are the ones that I came to be here for. They were always at the center, as Dennis mentioned, and the rest of you. To me, it's about them, is how do we help each and every one of them? And the families that support them. You heard this evening from several families talk about Familias Unidas. And what makes that program special is the families, the support of the families that support the students. And the way the students feel when that happens. They feel more connected to the school. They want to learn. So I hope that we continue to have that program. The other thing I loved about that program was that it gave my colleagues on the board a chance to go and meet those many families. And as Dennis would tell you, they wanted the same thing that we all want for our children, the very best. And all those beautiful projects, my goodness. They were just so amazing. So I really love that for that. I also like to thank the staff. We always talk about the teachers, but in the school district, there's a lot more than the teachers. There's the administrators, the office support, the custodial, the maintenance, the person that cuts the lawn, the crosswalk person, the child nutrition staff, the IT staff, the communications, and so on and so on. The business office, I mean, if it wasn't for them, we wouldn't get paid, right? So all of those HR and the bus drivers, I know that there are so many that I am going to forget this evening, but know that each and every one of you has made a difference in our mission to educate every child to their fullest potential. But there is one person that's very special to me and that is Dr. Baker. As he said, we have known each other for a very long time. I've heard of him before because he was a teacher. He was the principal at Hoover. He was a principal to some of my colleagues. And then he was in the administration here. And I first got to speak to him because Warren enrolled my two sons in a summer program, put them on the bus, and I had no idea where to pick them up. And he says to me, "Maria, I'm very busy. Just call John Baker. He will tell you what to do." And I was like, "John Baker? But he's, you know, he's a busy person. What am I doing?" But John, as always, was very helpful and told me exactly what to do. He has always been there to help the families every, before he was superintendent, I would call him, I would email him. He never said no to me. It was to me, I always would say, "My thing is, don't tell me no. Just help me make it so. Help me help this person. Help me make, help this student." And he always came through for me on that. And I know that he cares deeply about the students and he wants to make a difference as well. So John, thank you so much for helping me be a better board member. I also want to thank our partners, Septar, Familias Unidas, the Boys and Girls Club, Pal, Sal, and so on, all those that really help our families. We have Liz in the back who is the Boys and Girls Club alumni of the year or something like that. She was one of our students as well. And the funders, those that help us go the extra mile, do those extra little things that we need to do for our families. John, you're very good at getting those people on board. And to our citizens for passing the parcel tax and the bond measure. Those really made a difference at a time where we needed the money. All the funds are being spent the way we said they were going to be spent. And now we have the, well, you'll have the opportunity to complete the list of projects that needed to be done so that our students can thrive. And lastly, I will like to thank my colleagues on the board, those that came before this current board, and all of you for supporting me. To me, being on this board is quite different than other boards because we got along. We didn't necessarily agree on everything, but you all agreed to go to CSBA's governance classes and learn what it is to be a good board member and to put our differences aside for the good of the students. And David, I have a long list of things that I was thinking about, but I started just with one. I forward you an email. I'm sure you're going to get a lot more of those. So thank you very much, everybody. Take good care of yourselves, take good care of each other, and take good care of this district and educate our students to their fullest potential. Thank you.
So why don't we break at this point in time for the reception? And then let's, let's come back maybe at seven forty. How's that? Board members. Okay, and then we'll when we come back.
Cecilia Marquez becomes president. Do you take that position?
I do.
Very good. Come on over. And we have our clerk, who is Janet Lawson, becomes the vice president. Do you take that position?
I do.
Perfect. Come on over. Very good. And we now have our secretary, who is Mr. Wells. Oh, wait a minute. I say the secretary. What am I doing? We're not going anywhere. I'm not going anywhere. All right, then we have our next position is the trustee representative to, wait a minute, the clerk, the next, Mike comes up to be in the clerk.
Yes, I'll take the clerk.
Thank you. I got confused. And now Ms. McAvoy comes up to the next position, which I believe is, you were the trustee representative to the San Mateo County Committee on School District, correct? And now you move up to the next position. And but Elisa is not here tonight, so we need to make sure that we remember that when she's here that she is.
Poster there for me.
Okay. And the next position is for our new trustee, David Weekly. Come on up to sit right next to Liz. And you can take your.
Input with you.
All right, and I believe, David, you become the Legislative Network member. That's my mistake. All right, very good. Here we go. So now I'm turning it over to President Marquez.
Great, thank you. And then I just want to say a few words just before we start. Not too long. Just give me one second. And again, as taking over as president, obviously, is just a title for me. However, I do want to say thank you. I think I am the woman that I am because of my family. And so I do appreciate all their support and unconditional support. I also would like to say thanks to all of my board colleagues for your support to Dr. Baker Cabinet and of course, all of the staff from the Redwood City School District. And let's move on with our meeting. Are there any changes to the agenda? No. Okay, hearing on, moving on to item seven, approval of the agenda. Can I take a motion? To approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second, somebody wants a second.
Seconded.
Great. Roll call please someone.
Trustee Weekly.
Present.
Trustee McAvoy.
Hi.
Trustee Wells.
I.
Vice President Lawson.
I.
President Marquez.
Hi.
That was fine. You get the hang of it.
And is there any oral communication?
No oral communication.
Thank you. Item nine, school community reports, nine point one, Citizens Measure U Oversight Committee, year five report for the 2021-2022.
There you go.
New mic. Great, thank you. Good evening, Redwood City's School Board Member Trustees. Congratulations, new trustee, president of the board, Marquez. Congratulations, congratulations to our new trustee. Welcome aboard. You all do an amazing work for this community and our children, and we do thank you. All of my children are raised in the Redwood City School District, and they all have turned out amazingly, so. It's been a really good ride for us. So I am here before you tonight as the current president of your Measure U Oversight Committee, and realize that the members of this committee take their job extremely serious. It is an enormous task. There's a lot of documents to go through to make sure that the dollars that your community have voted to go towards our students are being used in the manner to which they were voted on. And you can rest assured that is exactly what is going on. Your site councils have done absolutely amazing jobs, seeing that that is exactly what's happening with the dollars. And your teachers have gotten extremely creative, thinking outside the box in today's new way of educating our youth. And it is great to see. So before you is the five-year expenditure report, and I'm here to tell you, we met on November 29th and reviewed them all. And I'm here to tell you that all of them were used in a manner that was consistent with about valid language. So moving forward, I look forward to continuing to work on this committee with this amazing group of members, and we will be replacing two that have fulfilled their terms, two amazing members. It's tough to lose them. We'll be doing a search for new ones and know that the money is going exactly where the taxpayers are expecting it to go. So if there is ever a doubt that any of your board, your bond measures have ever done that, I hope our communities are put at ease to realize that our students are the benefit of this, as our teachers are. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any comments from any of them?
Yeah, I just want to thank you, Janet, for the leadership that you brought to the committee. I know that that's invaluable and thank you and if you could express thanks to everyone that's on the Oversight Committee, it's the work that they do is so important. So that our community knows that this money is being spent the way that they approved it when they passed the ballot measure. And I am looking at the committee members who are expired, who expired in November, and I agree with you, those are amazing community members, so they're going to be hard to replace. But thank you for the work that you do and for bringing the report to us.
Yes, thank you. And I said this last week in my board report, but I'll repeat it here since you're here. Amazing job running the meeting. I called it a masterclass in running a public meeting, and I really meant it. It was really well executed. Thank you so much for being the chair of the Oversight Committee and continuing on in that role. I also want to thank, of course, our staff that's involved in this, Rick, Olivia, Patty, and Priscilla, who helped, you know, before she left the district. I do definitely want to say thank you to Vice Chair Don Gibson. He's one of the ones that is no longer the vice chair, but was for putting this together. And the other members, like Nicole Caldwell, who's returning and is going to take on another term, Margie Carrington, Stephanie Gibson, Gloria Torres, and then Ray Ray Alk, who is a longtime member of the Parcel Tax Oversight Committee, I think even before, from a previous one. But, you know, thank you for your time. Also, I really want to thank the committee, the community. Maria had mentioned this before when she was, you know, giving out her thanks, but, you know, just for, we're in year five of Measure T. And so the support and the trust of the Redwood City community that's given the school district, you know, the additional funds, as Janet said, they're doing their intended goal. It's maintain a quality education for our students. And so I really want to make sure that we thank everyone that supported this and that continue to pay for the parcel tax. And finally, of course, the principals and the site councils. They're the ones that are choosing how these funds are spent at their site. They're putting together this report that we review as a board, and then the committee provides the additional oversight. Be, I just want to make sure that we acknowledge the work that they put in, and I'm glad, again, that these funds are available to help them reach circles for educating Redwood City students.
Cecilia, is okay if I say something?
Of course.
Oh, thank you so much. Yes, Janet, thank you so much for your leadership on the committee and, and like my colleagues have said, please do thank all the committee members when you see them. And, you know, one of the things that's so important about the Oversight Committee that we all know is it's really important to have that sort of independent set of eyes looking at what we're doing. And I appreciate that you thoroughly look at everything and give us that assurance that yes, in fact, we're following the law and we're spending the money as the voters voted that we, you know, on the ballot and all that. So thank you for that. And I want to just echo what, you know, Mike said, is this money is just, well, and actually Janet, you said it as well, too, is the money at the school sites, you know, it's going out to the schools and it's being used for such important, important work. And when you look at all the various things that this money is funding, I think we really need to thank our community and our voters for voting in Measure U five years ago. So thank you very much for all your work on the committee and thank you to our voters out there.
Thank you. And again, my colleagues have said it very well. I have the same sentiment, and I do want to say thank you to you and the rest of the committee for actually committing to guide our district and make sure that the money, like you said, it's the ballot language, it met the ballot language and that things were getting done correctly. So I do appreciate everything you guys have done. Thank you. Item 10, bond program consent items. Are there any questions? If not, can I please get a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Trustee Weekly.
I.
Trustee McAvoy.
I.
Trustee Wells.
I.
Vice President Lawson.
I.
President Marquez.
I. Item 11, bond program action items. 11.1, recommendation regarding adoption of Futility Resolution 20, approval of new classroom building, modernization and site work, bid package G, change order number 13 with RODAM building builders and for Garfield Community School.
Are there any questions?
Are there any questions? I've been here none. Can I please get a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
Trustee Weekly.
I.
Trustee McAvoy.
I.
Trustee Wells.
I.
Vice President Lawson.
I.
President Marquez.
I.
Thank you, guys, and thank you, Maria, for your service.
Thanks, Will.
Thank you. Item 12, discussion items. 12.1, discussion of the 2022-23 School Board Committee assignments and school assignments.
Okay, you all have those before you and do you, as you see the, let's start with the commit, I think the easiest one, let's go back. The school board assignments. So why don't we just, my recommendation is just to leave them as they are right now where Maria was and David, you take Maria's place with these schools. That will make it easier for us right now. And then when we can August, we'll come back and determine how we're going to go for that school year. Because we normally come, you know, we just rotate, rotate.
You're just talking about the school board assignments to this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would keep those.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. That makes sense. I'm amenable.
Perfect, perfect. The next one is a little bit different because these are the the board committee assignments. So Maria was on the Budget Committee. She was on the Food Service Planning Committee. She was also on the Charter Schools Committee. So it would be, again, a preference if we went in that direction, that David handled those committees until we come back for the next school year and have a discussion of if you would like to rotate out of your committee and have another committee, another choice for another committee. What do you think?
I think it depends on, I think, whether or not David can commit to them, like depending on the time of day and how long and when they meet. And then I also, while we're talking about it, because of my commute, taking my son to San Jose for school every morning, Redwood City Together is becoming really difficult for me to attend and do it well. And so I know I had briefly talked to Cecilia about possibly taking over my spot there. If that's an option, so.
All right. So Janet, you are on the Redwood City Together, where you're saying that that is difficult. And Elisa is on it. Cecilia or Mike or David, it's, I mean, three times per year.
It's like nine to
nine to
ten thirty or eleven, but we're also chair.
Right.
Of that.
Right, exactly.
I think it's, I thought it was more than three meetings a year. Because there's also one retreat day and then, you know, Because there's also one retreat day and then, you know, there's committee work if you want, but yeah.
Yeah, but it, yeah, you are correct.
The very minimum is pretty, you know, is limited to a few meetings, but there is an expectation, I think, if you serve on the leadership team that you do participate in activities where you can, you know, serve on a committee or two. So anyway, yeah, the bare minimum would be just showing up to the leadership meetings, but there's a little more to it than that, I think. But yeah, it would be good. I mean, I feel badly that the way the timing's working now, Janet can't make it until about halfway through the meeting. So you're missing a significant
Yeah.
piece of it, so. I, I mean, I'm happy to stay on and I've been chairing the meetings. There is one meeting in May that I'm not able to be at, so it'd be great whoever took that over if they could be the Chair that day.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I actually would be happy to join the meeting and make myself available. Because again, as you guys know, most of the meetings I do is basically after work hours due to my full-time job, so. But yeah, that's definitely okay with me. Okay, thank you.
Is that all right with you guys? David and Mike?
So just, I would have, in terms of my assignments here, Stanford was my alma mater. So it'd be cool if I could have some connection there. That's not a huge deal. I mean, I'm happy to, as the freshman here, take the assignments that are most useful for me to go and field.
Yeah. David, you're welcome to take my spot on that committee. I don't know that it's been too active lately. But it, it, it's kind of gone up and down, right, John? I don't know how much more we'll be doing with that this next year. But I'm, I'm happy to let David serve on that if you'd like to. They're a good partner of ours in general. We, we had a series of meetings at, for a little bit, but then we haven't had too many late. I mean, we haven't, the board hasn't been a part of those. I know you have as staff.
Right. Myself and staff have been quite committed to the different types of research projects that they have had over the years.
Yeah.
We continue to be very much involved, especially with the Gardner Center. It normally doesn't involve board members, that piece. This piece here was, they were very much interested in our mental health. And we were, that was something that we were interested also, so they came in and did that research for us and then helped. It was supposed to be with Sequoia, but Sequoia was not at the table with us some of the times. So they ran with Redwood City and that's where we got the wherewithal to make sure we had the right counselors at the right schools. They did a lot of training with the counselors. They put together the protocols for us because we knew, Liz and I knew nothing about counseling. So here came in Dr. Josie, who is the head of psychiatry at Stanford to help us through that and he continues to help us through it and do the research work. So, you can definitely, when we meet with him, David, you can be part of that meeting. That's fine with me.
Cool. It's just, I was looking at the slate here of board assignments and, you know, if this is the time for me to say what I am more and less interested in, this is just me trying to express that that would be the sort of thing I'd be more interested in.
Perfect. So I will, Janet, if you don't mind, is, or was it Lisa? It was Lisa?
Yeah, I'm fine going off of that.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna offer my seat too and because I was wondering about the government relations, the two by two by two I've been wanting to do for a long time.
I'm happy to hand that to you.
All right, I like the swapping going on. This is the time to bring up committees you'd like to be on and we should also feel free to give up things we're ready to give up or try new things.
So Janet, you want to be on that, the two by two?
I would like to, but
All yours.
Okay, thank you. I don't know when they meet, though.
You know what? It's been, we work around people's schedules. I think we need to get a more regular schedule going because it's been hard to do, but it's usually during the day.
Okay.
Like later in the after, well, sometimes in the afternoon, but we've also done it in the morning.
Right, right. It's a, it's a doodle that goes out. I know I have.
Yeah, I think we need to get more regular, but yeah.
Okay, as long as I can work around the
I'm sure we can work around it.
You probably can, you probably can. And Janet, what about the Chamber? You okay with that? Or is that another one that's kind of difficult?
So that one I can attend by phone. I'm not really as participatory in it because of that. So if somebody wants it, I'm, I can give that up.
That meets monthly and it is the first Wednesday of every month from 12 to 1.
And that's, so the Seminole County Chamber Education Committee is kind of all partners who are kind of involved with education. So we get updates from the legislative representatives. All the, so all the school districts, the high school district, San Carlos School District, Belmont Redwood Shores, Dr. Baker give updates, the Community College gives an update, and then there's always a presentation about something education-related. So Mike's been on that.
Yeah, it's worth noting that they call it an hour, but it's always 90 minutes.
Right, right, right. You made that mistake and I need to
Tom Moore was really good about keeping it all the time.
So just, TMI on my schedule is just this week, this is late breaking news, I've accepted a job offer to go and run Capital One Labs. And they are headquartered in Washington DC. So, for weeks that the board is not going to be meeting in person here, many of those weeks I may be on a plane midweek, so it's just data point.
So then it's probably not the best.
Yeah, and I can stay on it. I can just keep calling him by phone.
Calling by phone, that's fine.
You were on it on your own, so I think between the two, you can make sure we covered.
I mean, I'm happy to, to do it if you want to, but if you two want to keep trying, I would say go ahead and do that. Or you can always call on me too, if for some reason neither of you can make it.
Okay.
Because I think as long as we just don't have more than two of us on that, you know.
Right, right, right. All right, so we've got, we've got Stanford, we've got two by two by two. The Charter School Committee, it's not a lot at all. Because the Charter Schools are up and running, so it's, it's really hardly anything.
It hasn't met in my two years, so.
And they're sold. And the one that is the Food Service Planning piece and Rick kind of oversees that now. And they tend to meet like once a month, they're once a month or once every other month. Now, since the bond has been passed and you know there is a big push for a central kitchen.
Yep.
So I know the meetings may be come more often depending on when we move forward. And we'll hear about that in closed session tomorrow, what that will look like. So, I don't know how often they will be meeting once that is set. But your times have been late afternoons from what I re, what I remember. And then about an hour and a half? Do you want to stay on that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so David's staying on that. All right, LCAP, Alisa and Mike?
Yeah, definitely.
Alisa? Okay, and then
So I'll just say, David, speak up if there's any other committees that you would like to be on, because some of these I've been on for a long time, so I'm happy to give them up or I'm happy to stay. So just.
I'm curious about the LCAP, just like what, what's involved there.
Yeah.
This Liz is the
Liz could speak to the number of meetings in the commitment.
Best committee.
It is a great committee.
And so we meet once
You're Mike, you're Mike. She loves the LCAP.
Um, so we meet once a month, we'll probably start in February and then we go all the way through June. It's due to the board at the end of June. So, and the meetings are, they were about two and a half hours.
Yeah, usually, I think in the late afternoon, I think they start at like four, yeah, exactly, four to six, yeah.
Teachers come with that staff on them as well. That's a great committee.
Yeah, I'm intrigued, so.
Yeah, I've, I've served on the LCAP Committee since we started doing LCAPs. I've been on it a long time. So, I am happy to turn it over to you, David, if you'd like that experience. I do think it's a, it's a great committee because a lot of the work that, I mean, I think you would like it very much from what I know about you. You know, we look at a lot of data and talk about how do you translate that data into student, you know, student success, student achievement, so. Yeah, and I think you'll learn a lot. I think it's a great committee and you'll give back, so that's fine. And Mike, you're, you'd like to stay on it, right? You've just been on it a couple of years, I think.
Yeah, I like it. I've been on it for two years, yeah.
Great, well, yeah, David, I will let you take it. I will miss Liz though and the team because it's a great committee. You can call on me, Liz, when you need me.
All right, so David, you're gonna take on the LCAP along with Mike. Mike and Alisa, you'll stay on the Audit Committee?
Sure.
Okay. The Audit, yeah, right. Oh, here's a good one, the Policy Committee. Alisa and Janet, yes?
I don't think we're giving that up. Sorry.
All right, and then Cecilia and David on the Budget Committee, you'll take on from Maria.
And David, I would be happy to serve on that if you don't want to, but if you'd like to, please serve on it.
I'm gonna defer to Dr. Baker, it sounds like.
Yeah, I've never served on the Budget Committee actually in all my 15 years.
So what I was thinking of doing, Alisa, was to get David up to speed, to let him be on it, and then we can talk about it again in August and see where we go down, see, for those who have not been on it, to have an opportunity to do so. But hoping to give him the experience of the different lingo of the budget along with, you know, the Rick, with Rick, of course. You know, we talked about the numbering and which was, you know, in our meeting that we had the other day and you're asking all these questions. So maybe we can get him acclimated in that and then we can talk about it again in August. Is that all right? Thank you, Lisa. So David, you will be on it. And then we'll discuss it again in August. So when we come back in August, they're all up for grabs again. Okay. I think some people will just say, no, I don't want to do that. All right, so I think we've got them all, right? Perfect. Thank you so much.
Nice, thank you. Moving along, item 13, Consent Items. If there's no questions, can I please get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Trustee Weekly.
Aye.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Vice President Lawson.
Aye.
President Marcus.
Aye. Item 14, Action Items, 14.1, Recommendation Regarding Approval of the 2022-23 First Interim Budget Report for Redwood City School District.
And that's Mr. Edson.
Let me show my screen.
Meeting members of the board tonight, we are presenting the first interim report for the fiscal year and school year 2022-23. This slide just shows the annual budget cycle, the one highlighted on the top right corner is where we're at tonight, the first interim report. This will be followed by the Governor's Budget Proposal for 23-24 on January 10, 2023. We are going to bring, and we did receive approval to bring our audited actuals to the February 8th Board Meeting, so that our auditors had time to complete that work. That'll take us straight into the second interim report, followed by the May revision to the Governor's January Budget Proposal and then heading into the month of June where not only do we have public hearings for the budget and subsequent approval, but also for the LCAP, public hearing as well as the approval. Once again, on that very fun committee throughout the winter and spring. I'm a little jealous. And that'll take us through this fiscal year. It'll come really quick as everything does this time of year moving forward in preparation for the start of the 23-24 school year. So, quick overview, Education Code 42-130 requires two interim reports for school district. One, the first interim that we're talking about tonight is from July 1 through October 31 of our current fiscal year. The second interim report covers July 1 through January 31 of our current fiscal year. And if you self-certify, qualified or negative, then you have a great opportunity to do a third interim report, which covers through April 30. We don't have to worry about the third interim report in Redwood City. With that certification, there's three possible certifications, positive, qualified and negative that I mentioned. I guess I'm giving away the ending at the beginning. We are positively certifying for the first interim for the 22-23 school year. So going through a couple of slides, the next couple of slides are some of the assumptions that we use, including enrollments. And on this slide, you can see that our census day numbers for our enrolled students was 6308, which is above the original projection, but below where we were at last year, so we're still in declining enrollment and projected to be in declining enrollment going forward. The numbers for 23-24, 24-25 are still being looked at and massaged and tweaked based off of this year and they'll be brought back at second interim with any noted changes to our projections for our out years in our multi-year. Other assumptions, some of the basic assumptions that we use was the COLA for the LCFF. Even though we're a basic aid district, we still allocate money based on the LCFF funding formula from our property tax revenue. You can see for 22-23, 6.7% COLA was the final COLA given to us along with a 6.56 augmentation of our LCFF funds. That resulted in no additional money for Redwood City, although it does change the disbursement of those funds, especially for Liz and the LCAP and some of the work that they're doing in Ed Services. Going forward in 23-24, we are projecting at minimum a 7.5% COLA. Right now, the LAO is predicting an 8.78 statutory COLA with a recommendation to fund at 8.38, so a partially funded Prop 98 COLA for education. We went, we came in a little bit below that, going far above what was projected in August of 5.34%. Knowing that it's going to be significantly higher, we just don't know where it's going to land when revenues come into the state through the spring and after the tax filing deadline. As you can see also, our Cal-Sturs employer rate is going to remain constant at 19.10. That's the statutory high that Cal-Sturs can go at this point without further legislative action. And then with CalPERS, after seemingly a decade of increases annually, we're actually seeing a little bit of relief in terms of it not continuing to go upward, although 25.2% is still nearly 140% higher than it was, you know, just eight or nine years ago. So, factors that still contribute to the budget. Going through the next couple of slides, these are Fund 01 or General Fund. We'll go through revenue and expenditure changes. On here, you can see between adopted budget and first interim, there's about $10 million more of Fund 01 revenue, mainly due to the implemented state budget and the trailer bill language that followed that produced significant one-time money for Redwood City School District, including the Art, Music and Instructional Materials Block Grant, the Extended Learning Opportunities Program and some other funding home-to-school transportation that's now included in our budget that increased our expected revenue. Here is a breakdown of what our expected revenue will be at the end of this fiscal year of approximately $137 million between all of our revenue sources. Going into expenditures, we're actually almost even with adopted budget and the first interim report, down approximately $33,000 for this time period. for this time period between salaries, benefits, and our operating expenses. Here is a, where we expect our expenditures to go for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And the question often asked, how much goes to salary and benefits for our employees? Right now, we're projecting seventy-seven point one eight percent of our twenty-two, twenty-three budget to go to salary and benefits. Going into Fund Zero One, the ending fund balance, there is significant one-time money that has come in. You'll see a very large number under HB, which is legally restricted. We are showing the revenue is coming in in twenty-two, twenty-three, and our spending of those revenues is actually going to be in the out years of twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five as ed services and Liz, amongst other groups, start developing plans for expenditures of that money. Some with, I'll say, requirements of plans and others that we just have to plan to spend to the benefit of our students throughout the district. You can see also on here with the twenty-two, twenty-three, as was shown with the adopted budget, we do not have any funds going towards the board mandated reserve of the three percent goal. And we do have, but we have met all of our other requirements, including our routine restricted maintenance, as well as our reserve for economic uncertainties of three percent. Moving quickly into the summary of the multi-year projections, a lot of the information would be represented in the twenty-two, twenty-three column that I just shared. Once again, you can see the large other state and local revenues. That's this year, right? That's the money that came in from this year's governor's budget with everything else following through, and then the expenditure of those funds. Those funds that we did receive this year are in twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five in our book, supplies, and other outlay and services and operating expenses. Those expenses will be moved as we develop plans and then implement those plans. Some of that money will ultimately go to salaries and benefits as we hire positions, hopefully, to run those programs. And so coming down here, you can see that our current year fund balance is a positive six point three million in adopted budget. We were negative. And then our ending fund balances of approximately, beginning with twenty-four, and the ending balance of thirty million. The components of the ending fund balances, going through the multi-year projection of note, you can see the restricted ending balance decreasing back down to what we're more likely used to seeing around that four point seven five million dollar mark as we spend down those one-time funds over those two years. We were also able, in this multi-year projection, to start, I'll say, funding again rather than refunding the board mandated goal of three percent by being able to put in one point five percent in twenty-three, twenty-four, and then the full three percent in twenty-four, twenty-five. Also meeting our requirements for routine restricted maintenance and our reserve for economic uncertainty of three percent. You can see on the bottom line, we expect to have zero and unassigned, unappropriated for this year and small balances moving forward in twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five.
Can I interrupt real quick? The reserve for economic uncertainty, that's the state mandated reserves?
This, I do want to point out, I did change one thing on the slide from what was posted in the agenda packet. I had wrong headers on these two columns. I got really excited about second interim for fund balances and had first interim and second interim on there, rather than adopted budget and first interim. There was no changes to the numbers, though. This shows our expected balances in the, our other funds at the conclusion of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. I think of note on here, you'll see that as of right now, Major T will have about two million dollars left if we don't assign other projects during this school year. So we are winding down that program in anticipation of our new bond program. That's just the original slide.
Yeah, you know, just one other thing, Rick, on that previous slide. The other thing to note is the reserve now we have in the, or the balance, I suppose, in the cafeteria fund, because this is, of course, one that we were so worried about at the beginning of COVID, remember?
Yep.
So that's good that it's gotten built back up, and that gives us some flexibility in terms of food and our food service program. So that's great.
Yeah, thank you for that. That's absolutely true.
Yeah, yeah, because we were worried we were going to have to dip into our general reserve, remember? So this is really good. I really appreciate staff and our community rallying around the food service program. And then, of course, the state and the federal government also coming in to help.
And I'll move forward as soon as my computer reconnects.
I think that my internet has been very spotty because they kicked me out. It's trying to connect right now.
Yeah, the internet.
It's back. There we go. All right. There we go.
So for those of you at home, we lost connection to the Wi-Fi, just connecting back. So thanks for your patience.
So with the first interim, and as we move through this school year, areas that we need to monitor as a board, as staff for the organization, just the state and national economy with mixed signals, hearing different things from different people with the same numbers and how their take on it. We certainly have a shortage of teacher substitutes and other classified staff, including, you know, IA, CNS, employee negotiations with both of our bargaining units are, have started or are going to start in the upcoming weeks. As usual, in education, the uncertainty of funding in general, right? And what's going to come forward through the governor's proposals and ultimately the trailer bills, and then still keeping a close eye on enrollment, right? So one, we can provide services to the students that show up, and we're staffed appropriately to provide those services to students. Next steps, December, that's today, tonight, with the first interim report. As I spoke earlier in January and early February, we'll review the governor's budget proposal, as well as present the audited actuals for acceptance by the board. March was the second interim report. And then May-June with the governor's budget revision, and then the public hearings for both LCAP and the budget for twenty-three, twenty-four. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I can wait my turn. It's hard for me to see everybody there, so.
Go ahead, Alisa.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Rick. I really appreciate the report, and I know I traded a few emails with you already, or I guess, well, actually, we had a conversation this time. That's right. It wasn't just emails. It was conversation. I just wanted to bring up, you know, mostly for our audience benefit, because I think all the board members know this and staff knows this, but as you mentioned, Rick, we are in employee negotiations. And so the budget information they presented, I just wanted to clarify, but I'm pretty sure at this point, it doesn't include, and it does not include any salary increases for this year or for out years, correct?
That is correct. We do not include anticipated settlements in our budget documents.
Right. So I think that's, yeah, it's just important for us as we think about, you know, different reserves and one-time monies and what our budget looks like, that we know we want to give salary increases, so we're going to have to try to find the money for that. So I think we all know that, but it's important for the audience to also understand that. So thank you very much. Good report, and I always look through the budget as well and the multi-year projections and stuff. So thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks for putting it together. It's, you know, again, and presenting it so clearly for us tonight. The thing that I always find difficult with the budget is being able to tie it to what the actual services are that are behind it. And what sort of the impact will be of, I mean, we can see it in the revenue line, the impact of the one-time funds coming to an end. But what does that actually mean to, you know, how does that impact our staff, our students, and really the whole community? I think these are the kind of conversations that we'll be having over the next few months. But that's the part that's a little bit tougher, particularly when we see like the expenditure line still going up, while the revenue line is going down. You know, what does that mean for, I know we rolled out like awesome mental health support on one-time funding? And where does that go when that one-time funding ends? You know, so again, great report, but it's like, you know, it's, there's a lot of, there's more uncertainty, I think, in there than even just the things to watch that were called out.
Right. You are correct. And so as we move forward in the next couple of months, you will be seeing items that we have been looking at in the executive cabinet to determine, you know, how can we fund those items differently? Because the money is going away. And so looking at the dollars that we have, and when you're looking at the LCFF funding, how it should be fun, how those dollars should be funding our students who are ELS, our students who are homeless, our students of special ed, and our students low income. So, you know, we've really got to look at that because with the dollars we had previously, we were funding everybody, which, you know, that's what the dollars were used for. But as we come to LCFF funding, it has those specific guidelines, and that's when Liz, as you know, you're on the LCAP, you start looking at those dollars, because those dollars are meant for those students and to meet their needs. And so we, as an executive group, have, and that's Liz, Wendy, Rick, and myself, when we meet every Monday, we've started knocking on some positions there, which, you know, how we're going to fund them, and we're going to fund them and keep them so that we can keep services. But when we look at those services and who those services need to be for, and that funding goes with those students, it's going to be a little bit of a shift, and that's something you're really going to have to look at. Yeah. And so we've started, we have a list, and we will start once the negotiation starts to come to more of a steady negotiation process, we'll start bringing back with you that information that you have it. We will also be discussing it a bit on, probably more than a bit, on January twentieth, when I go through the the next phase of this year, and how I want to do looking at board meetings differently and so forth. Which, you know, Liz, Rick, and Wendy will both be at those meetings, too, for certain portions.
I just wanted to make the same comment that Alisa did, that, you know, the numbers that we're looking at, they don't include any raises for the staff going forward, and it's really important to us that we do give raises to the staff. So that's definitely something we need to pay attention to. I really don't have any questions because I had an opportunity to meet with you, Rick, earlier this week. So thank you for the presentation, and I appreciate how easy it is to read and understand. So thank you for putting that together.
And then again, for me, as being part of the budget committee, obviously went over the information. I'm very happy to hear that we continue to be positive certification. And so, you know, the Redwood City School District is moving along, and of course, just in the next few years, you know, just we're going to be keeping an eye on where the money, you know, to continue to be positive certification. And again, with those one-time funding, being careful as to what we are going to do. And again, I really appreciate you and the team behind in the business services that support you. So thank you very much.
I really appreciate you even meeting with me before I was sworn in, put up here. So really appreciate that. You know, there are years of plenty and years of want, and I think weirdly enough, while COVID's been incredibly difficult on folks, it also unleashed a lot of interesting funding. And that regime is going to change, and I suspect that the kind of budget meetings we're going to have in the next couple of years, especially with our declining enrollment, are going to cause some very different reshuffling that's going to be needed to keep this district operating really well and offering great education to students. Thank you for your work here.
So what we're going to continue to do is make sure that when we do have the, when the second interim comes, we'll do the same thing again. Of course, it's the budget committee that gets together. But then, Rick, I'd like to be in my weekly meetings with you, and, you know, prior, and I think that's a good manner for us to continue with moving forward. So thank you, Rick, for being at those meetings. I think it was helpful for all of us. Yep.
Yes. So can I please get a motion to approve fourteen point one?
I'll move to approve.
A second. Trustee Weekly?
Hi.
Trustee McAvoy?
Hi.
Trustee Wells?
I.
Vice President Lawson?
I.
President Marcus?
I. Fourteen point two, recommendation regarding approval of personnel changes for twenty-two, twenty-three.
It's going.
Thank you. Well, I'm bringing this item to you tonight in anticipation, as we grow our transitional kinder program, there are strict regulations regarding ratios. And so out of the LCAP funds, it's proposed to be funded to have a TK instructional assistant available to manage that ratio for absence purposes. Any questions?
Is this a floating position, like they move to different TK classrooms?
Okay.
If we're required to do it, it seems like there's not a lot of discussion about whether or not to do it.
Any other questions? Or comments? If not.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Trustee Weekly?
Hi.
Trustee McAvoy?
Hi.
Trustee Wells?
I.
Vice President Lawson?
I.
President Marcus?
I. Fourteen point three, recommendation regarding approval of resolution twenty-one for extended date kindergarten.
So in all full transparency, it was discovered in a board policy committee that in reviewing the upcoming TK needs, the CDE wraps TK and kinder in together in regards to instructional minutes and the language and so forth. And in two thousand and five, a rep solution should have been brought to you regarding the possibility of having kinder minutes be longer than four hours a day. Our teacher contract for years has had four hours and approximately twenty minutes in the contract. And so I'm bringing this to you tonight after the fact, because we do have some programs that run that duration. Our negotiations in twenty twenty allow for now three hundred minutes. So to correct that problem, I'm seeking your approval for a resolution tonight to have the minutes for TK and kinder, which are wrapped together, be up to three hundred minutes each site for each classroom. Are there any questions regarding that? This particular one?
All right. Is there a financial impact to this, or is this just procedural to?
Right. No, there is no financial impact at this time.
There's no questions. Can I please get a motion to approve fourteen point three?
So moved.
Seconded.
Roll copies. Trustee Weekly?
Hi.
Trustee McAvoy?
Hi.
Trustee Wells?
I.
Vice President Lawson?
I.
President Marcus?
I. Item fifteen, Board and Superintendent Report. Fifteen point one, report from Board Members and Superintendent. Fifteen point one, report from board members and superintendent.
I'm kind of used to Maria calling on us. You don't have to. We can set a new tradition.
You're welcome to go as you please, because I'll tell you sometimes when you're not ready, like even like the last meeting, I was like, oh, my God, I get cut off guard. And so I'm happy to let you guys freely, you know, move along as you guys.
You bet. I'm already off mute. Mine's quick. So the only thing I would have had to have reported was, well, the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee got canceled due to lack of quorum.
So I've been just doing my introductory meetings with the principals at each of the different schools in the district. So going through, introducing myself, doing a tour of the campus and taking notes. And then I've been sharing those notes with Dr. Baker. Happy to put together a little bit of a report on what new eyes found in the district, you know, when I've finished that kind of tour of duty, but I've found it tremendously informative.
Thank you.
So Mike actually attended a bond team meeting also. Along with myself, I believe that was the same day the CBAC
You're right.
Meeting was canceled. And then I attended the RCTA, R CSD climate meeting with Wendy. It was a small meeting, but I think it was really good, a really productive meeting. Alyssa and Wendy and I had a policy meeting, more policies coming your way. I think only a couple this time. They are, yes. Don't tell them that yet. And then I attended the wellness committee meeting with Katrina and she gave a lot of updates on all the work that she's been doing and vision screenings throughout the district and dental screenings and hearing screenings. And vaccinations and she's doing a lot of really good work. So that was a good meeting. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you. And the only thing I have to report is the budget committee. Which, again, you all of us heard about the first interim. So thanks again, Rick.
One more thing, I also forgot. I had a delightful time meeting the entire Ed Services Committee and that was cool. So I have had lots of questions as I've been coming down a learning curve about what we're doing and I got a lot of great answers and also a lot of homework assignments. So I literally got presented with a book and represent recommendations for half a dozen other books, which I've now ordered and are on their way to me. So I've got a little Ed Services library I'm building up at home. For those who are interested.
Let's see, just to add, we did have a two by two by two meeting. It was Maria's last meeting. And so Janet, you can attend the next one with us, which will be great. We did talk about Hoover School in particular and particularly kind of safe routes to schools. Cleaning up some of the areas like the pedestrian bridge and some of the areas around the school. And then also about the safety on the school. So as a reminder, the two by two by two, we have Redwood City there. So all their various departments were there to be able to represent. And then also the high school district. And then we also talked about, I forget the acronym for the group or the name of the group, but it's the group that's working with the the, the older youth on bicycles in Redwood City. And all the work that's going on there. And it's pretty impressive, actually. Pretty interesting group of individuals and the, the work that Redwood City together and some of the folks from Redwood City and Powell are providing to this group is extraordinary, I think. And and I think we're, we were asked to kind of help with some of it too. So I know that Dr. Baker will be following up on that.
Right. Yeah. We were asked to assist with, you know, some of the different activities, remember? Yeah, MIT because of the, the playground and so forth, they would want to use during a certain time. And so I put them in connection with Martin. And then they would talk to Martin and see how that can be done. And we have to have custodial services in the evening, who would be paying for that and so forth. So.
Well, I did bring that up and it sounds like they have money from Chan Zuckerberg.
Yeah, they do.
Hopefully they can fund our custodians, but they evidently love that playground with the basketball hoops and the open area that where you could do some bicycling tricks and things like that. So maybe they do a couple of tournaments or things, I think, is what they were talking about.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah. So I was there at two by two by two, but the other thing that I went to was last night was RCEF. And some of the members are terming out. And so new members are coming in and it's really interesting to see that there are quite a few interested parents to be on RCEF now. So it's great. And they're working, as you all know, with the Bayside Schools. And creating more opportunities for our students in the area of mental health, the area of of reading, if they just find the people. That's, that's one thing that's been difficult as it is for, for all entities involved. So I'm going to ask them to come do a report to the board. So the board can get more information about RCEF. It's turning into a really, I think, a really functional cohesive group and they're out there seeking new members and the new members are really interested in working for Redwood City students and the Redwood City students who definitely have more needs. But at the same time, seeing what they can do more broader. So i- it's, it's turning into a really good group. Sarah was not there last night. She was at another meeting, the executive director. But they are definitely thinking of other funding mechanisms to bring their dollars to enhance their dollars. And so we'll see what that will bring in the spring. So it's a good meeting.
Great. Thank you very much. Moving along, item sixteen, information, sixteen point one, sixteen point one, information on Sematil County Investment Fund. Are there any questions or comments? No? Thank you. Seventeen correspondence.
I did get an email from a couple of the former North Star Forward Committee members asking for some follow-up. And I know that Dr. Baker, they've met with you as well. And so I'll be, you know, communicating with them on that. And I, I think they're asking us, you know, to basically look back at some of the other recommendations that we didn't really talk about too much, because we were looking at kind of the bigger bigger changes that could have happened in North Star. But there's some other things that came out of that committee that we could consider that might help. So you know, Dr. Baker, I'll leave it that to you in terms of how you want to circle back with the board, you know, whether that's on the January twentieth or in, you know, agendize it on another meeting or something like that, but we should probably follow up at some point.
Okay.
Yeah. And I can talk to you on Monday about that as well when we meet. You know, but and and I don't know if others, board members are getting correspondence as well or just me. Sometimes they send it to everybody and sometimes they send it just to one board member. That's why I'm bringing it up, just to let everybody know.
I think David had.
I've had, just want to point out for the record, I've had a number of parents reach out about, I don't know if you all have seen Soul the Story. Talking about different methods for teaching literacy and some critiques of the pre-existing techniques. Methods for teaching literacy that are not working very well, some of which are used in this district. So that's helped kick off and helped motivate some discussions with Dr. Baker as well as with Ed Services. And it's very much top of mind for them thinking about how we can use best practices to help our kids achieve full literacy. So just want to point that out, that that is on our radar for folks who are listening and curious whether or not we're thinking about that. Absolutely are.
Definitely.
Yep.
Great, thank you. Item eighteen, other business or suggested items for future agenda? No? Okay, thanks. And nineteen, board meetings calendar, are there any changes to the board meeting calendar?
Just a reminder tomorrow at nine thirty. Now, Alyssa, you'll be in, again, in on.
I think I'll have to do Zoom. You can hear me. I think it's getting worse. So it's just as well. I didn't try to come down. So, yeah, but I'll, assuming that I'm feeling okay, I'll, I'll be, you know, I'd like to be there. So, but Zoom.
Okay.
Did you have an estimate of how long that was going to be? I shouldn't remember.
I have it for two hours.
Two hours, second.
And we may need all two hours. We have a lot to decide, yeah.
Right. And also it's, it's David's first meeting.
Right.
Right. Yeah.
Great, thank you. And I guess before we move to adjourn, I would like to just welcome David to the Redwood City Board of Trustees and I'm sure you would really enjoy the time with everyone here. So thanks again for joining.
Thank you. I had some larger prepared remarks, but I'm just going to put them aside. I'm just, one of the reasons why I was really excited to join this board was just seeing how courteous and professional and functional this board is. And that's really fantastic and something that I am committed to maintaining as well. And our positive relationship with the superintendent and with the staff. And so I think we have all the ingredients we need to get great work done here. And I'm really excited to be a part of it. So thank you for so warmly welcoming me into this and I hope to be able to honor that with some really solid contributions here to help look after our kids. So thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Welcome, dude.
And with that, can I please get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Can I make a motion that we adjourn in honor of Maria Diaz Slocum and her twenty-one years of service on the board?
I will second that.
That's great.
Of course. Thank you. And roll call? Or no? Thank you.
Feel better, Alyssa.
All right. Thanks so much. Nice job, everybody.
Bye.
And welcome to President, Cecilia.
Thank you.